All right, I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for March 19, Page 24. Thank you, everybody, for joining us in person and online. Now, we'll go pretty quick through these first few items. Everybody can answer to the agenda. Any comments on the agenda? We got a motion? Motion for the agenda. Second, on favor. Opposed. Any special presentations tonight, Sean?
Yes, sir.
We'll open the floor to public comments, starting with those in the room.
Mark.
All righty.
Please state your name and your address.
Oh, well.
My name is Mark Monroe. I live in Harrisburg on 6751 River Hills Drive. Been a resident of Harrisburg since about 2000. I live in the River Hills subdivision, which, if you're not familiar with it, is back behind the gas station off of Shamrock and behind Stallings in that little area. And back a number of years ago, the Stallings Road was basically closed at the end when Salute Creek went in and they did all the railroad redevelopment. They shut down a bunch of intersections going across. And so, basically, all of that traffic now in that whole area has to go through Farm Mill and over that bridge there by the dump. Couple of concerns. When the railroad construction went in, not only was that particular intersection closed, but many, many other ones going all the way down into Charlotte, down to Oro, and all of them were closed. I don't know how many, but probably two-thirds of them were closed. Maybe more than that. In Harrisburg specifically, a lot of the traffic got routed over, is it, is it Roberta? What is Roberta? I think the same name, but he goes over there by Publix.
That's the Central Highway.
Yeah. Actually, at the last city council meeting, there was one that was complaining quite a bit about traffic and issues with that intersection because it's really steep and the traffic piles up. And there seem to be a lot of concerns about that. And in my particular neighborhood, there's a lot of concerns, and then the gate gets opened there for Salute Creek. Those trucks come through and people really, really drive crazy. The traffic on Farm Mill has gotten really crazy because of all those subdivisions that have come in from Rocky River and that area down through there. So, my concern is with the zoning of that new spot there off Shamrock that you're basically going to introduce in hundreds of homes potentially onto two roads that are already at capacity. One is the bridge is already a problem. People complain about it. And now you're going to introduce in what could be hundreds of more cars literally sandwiched between Shamrock and Stallings. And they're going to obviously go right up that bridge where everybody else is, and it's already a problem. Or they're going to be dumped out on Shamrock, or they're going to end up coming out. If the gates aren't open, they're going to have to come out on Farm Mill, which is already a dangerous intersection with all the new traffic on Farm Mill. So, I just wanted to state my concerns. I don't know that putting several hundred homes in that area is a good idea. If it's not avoidable, there needs to be a really solid solution in place for traffic as far as how people are going to get over the bridge and get to Publix and get to Lowe's and how they're going to get out of Shamrock and Farm Mill and how all that's going to be handled without creating a huge mess. So, I know that development's inevitable, but it needs to be development that's sustainable and it's still cohesive and works well with the existing community. So, I know that everybody in my neighborhood is real nervous because they're afraid that everybody's going to avoid that bridge. They're going to start dumping out on Shamrock, and with that, Farm Mill already being a problem, it's going to, it will be, it can be a huge problem because it could quadruple that traffic. So, I just wanted to publicly state that I'm concerned about that. And it sounds like there's going to be a meeting on that on Thursday. So, when y'all were hashing this out, we need to really, if it moves forward, hopefully it won't. But if it does, there needs to be a really stable plan in place that not only does what the developer wants to do, but also keeps an existing homeowner base and property taxpayers in a good place, too. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can share a little background and information, and maybe for those that may be tuning in via Zoom. The rezoning sign and project that he is referring to is a future proposed conditional zoning annexation referred to as the Shamrock Road subdivision. There is a neighborhood developer meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM right here in the chambers for those that may want to attend and learn more about the project. And that includes, they did do traffic impact analysis, which I'm sure they'll share that information concern neighbors as well.
That would be the best place for you and any of your neighbors to have a direct impact and conversation with the developer proposing that development. So, I'd encourage you to find your way there if you can on Thursday.
I plan to be there, and I will also send it out to the Facebook neighborhood group and tell them. I think they were a little unclear, but I was discussing that between the meeting today and the one on Thursday. So, I'll clear all that up for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to public comment?
Please state your name and your address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Batten. I reside in Harrisburg. My address is 4615 Art Moore Lane. I live in Grantham. And my question today is, is there a plan in Harrisburg from a planning and zoning perspective affordable housing?
Julie, I'll turn that over.
So, what I'll do is I'll give you my card. We have a long-range comprehensive land use plan that efficient different types of housing types for choice in various areas of the city. Do we have a housing plan specifically targeting affordable housing? Not that, no. The answer would be no on that. I do know that in the region, the county of Cabarrus, with some of our neighboring counties, are working on a housing assessment to evaluate not only housing choice, but affordability in the area. So, there is an ongoing plan at the county level to examine all of the jurisdictions within our county as well as the unincorporated areas. So, again, I'll give you my card, and I'll be glad to follow up with you to have a larger discussion.
Thank you. I have another question. So, it's my understanding that Harrisburg is really what their planning is, development plan, to expand significantly. My understanding is there's thousands of expectations of new residents to move to Harrisburg. Is there also a plan, an infrastructure plan, to accommodate the traffic, as this gentleman just said, based on the expectation from a planning perspective?
Yes, again, that's part of our long-range plan. But with that, our ordinance actually implements that in any development that is proposed has to do a traffic analysis that evaluates the impact of their development on our existing infrastructure. We work closely, not only in the county level, but the state level for funding for other projects as well with regard to transportation improvements. So, again, I'll be glad to follow up with you and bring one of my engineers into the conversation that's focused on transportation planning to help address your questions.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Any other public comments? Anybody online? Close the public comment session. We'll look at the consent agenda. It was brought to my attention. There was one mistype in there. The vote was labeled as five to zero, and in actuality, it's six to zero. So, you have a motion to incorporate that into the minutes from February 24. All righty, a motion, type, on favor. Opposed. All right. And now I need a motion to approve the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes as amended. Second, on favor. I see no old business. I will turn it over. First up is H 2024-01 RP Farmington Request to amend Master Sign Program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as written to the record, this is a conditional zoning petition, H 2024-01. This is a request to amend the Farmington Plan Unit Development. So, the purpose of this amendment is to incorporate a master sign program within the existing approval, the existing zoning district. This requires a processing, this conditional zoning petition. This proposal does not alter the development design, the vested uses. It does not impact any of the existing requirements or conditions of approval. It does not intensify or add density to the approved Farmington Plan Unit Development. What it does is it adds additional performance standards, a design layer within the development as it relates to allowed signage within the development. So, I'm going to briefly give you a little background on the Farmington Development. Some of this information I obtained from their website or brochures on Farmington. So, for those that may not know where Farmington is, it's just off the Interstate 485 on Rocky River Road. The main intersection is Rocky River Road and Farmington Ridge Parkway. It is approximately 185 acres and a mixed-use development that actually crosses jurisdictional boundary. Some is in Harrisburg, Cabarrus County, and some is in Mecklenburg County. So, they're two regulating parties for this overall development. I took a little time to do research on the Farmington Development, and I was quite surprised that the Farmington Development actually originated out of another planned unit development called Brookdale around 2002. The Brookdale Shopping Center is the Harris Teeter right there, the intersection of Rocky River Road and the Plaza Extension. It covers both the east and west side of the Plaza Extension. And the north side where Farmington was, or is, excuse me, where Farmington is, was considered a feature section of the Brookdale Development. Then, there are many amendments that follow 2009, 2017, is where I first found an amendment of the planned unit development that referred to the name of Farmington and focused solely on this northern portion acting as its own planned unit development. It modified zones, uses, building forms within it, as well as, I believe that's when they first may have announced that the YMCA was going to go within Farmington. Then, in 2019, it was amended again that increased some of the density on the residential development types, performance standards, and it looked like it was removing the YMCA from the development, which, as you know, ultimately is going to be housed in our own park. 2021, there were two additional conditional zoning amendments that modified some of the boundary of the Farmington Development. There was a land exchange, and therefore, there had to be a zoning action as well. Which brings us to the today's amendment. This is a map of Farmington where you see the yellow area is all residential, which is, I believe, very close to being built out. The apartments, the east side. It's like, yeah. Yeah, the west side, sorry. Farmington is the Charlotte side where you see the apartments and townhomes. And then, I'm still not sure I have my directions right. But the right side of Farmington Ridge Parkway is our jurisdiction. Now, the primary commercial area is all there with the red building forms. The bulk of that is within our jurisdiction, but we do share some towards the 485 with Mecklenburg County. So, the focus of this amendment, again, we're amending the entire planned unit development. The Master Sign Program will apply only to the commercial district within this development. So, I first wanted to share and answer the question, what is a Master Sign Program? Well, this is very common in most jurisdictions. It is a standardized design book for signage. And typically, Master Sign Programs are required in most jurisdictions. Our ordinance is silent on it. So, that is one reason we're taking it through the conditional zoning process. These Master Sign Programs are applied primarily to campus-type developments. That could be an office park campus and medical office park, master plan developments, like the mixed-use developments such as the Farmington Development, and even as small as multi-tenant commercial centers. A lot of jurisdictions require you have a building with more than two tenants. Within the building, you should have a sign permit to ensure you have a cohesive sign design on your building. Sign programs provide a lot of benefits in a cohesive sign structure development, and it really helps promote a sense of place and community. So, with regard to sign regulations, sign regulations are applied based on zones, even overlay zones such as a planned unit development. Well, what's interesting is Farmington is really big because besides being a PUD, it has underlying zoning classifications. And when I went down to look at our ordinance, I didn't see that the UDO that was in place at the time of this approval had the combination of underlying zoning districts with the PUD. So, it has C2, which I provided in your report, and a PUD zoning for signs. And we really couldn't figure out, well, how do you mix them? How do you apply them? So, that is why many cases you would have a specialized Master Sign Program, so you don't have to try to read between the lines and applying sign regulations. So, in this case, the Master Sign Program will help clarify permitted signs within this commercial area of the development with regard to size, height, materials, locations, and even sign types. The applicant is requesting some flexibility within this sign program, which is typical in large developments like this. They are proposing exchange for some of the flexibility to ensure the package has high-quality sign design, materials, and illumination. They are actually self-imposing some limitations on the number of signs, of ground-mounted signs within their community for the flexibility and actually prohibiting electronic message boards, which they're entitled to by right. They are asking to still reserve for one parcel, which is the Harris Teeter Fuel Station. They typically like the electronic sign for the pricing. But besides that, they're proposing to prohibit them everywhere else within the development. And I just want to point out on the map real quick before I dive into the sign program with their self-limiting, allowed ground-mounted signs proposed to occur from the first intersection on Farmington Ridge Parkway. Nor, they would, they will not be allowing ground-mounted signs along that roadway within the commercial district, just along what we're calling the out parcels, that is between Rocky River Road and that first intersection where you see the green dots there. So, with regard to what they're proposing. So, the main entrance at Rocky River Road and Farmington Ridge Parkway, they are proposing a large combined development sign at the main entrance within a sign easement right in front of the Chick-fil-A. They are proposing the sign to be 96 square feet in size under a straight PUD zoning classification that exceeds what would be permitted. But under the C2 zoning district, which they have as well, they can go up to 100 square feet. So, again, we were, we were trying to just come up with one program that we know how to apply. They're proposing a six-feet-in-depth with enhanced lighting. They're proposing halo lit with push, what we call an acrylic back, where it comes to, comes through the panel more like a glow at that intersection. I've already mentioned that it would be placed within a sign easement on private property. Right across the street at the partnering intersection, a corner, they are proposing a subdivision sign, more of a branding sign you derived in Farmington. This particular sign is proposed to be 100 square feet, which would be the same size as the other corner. So, we have some balance there. It, too, would be halo lit and within the requirements of height on this particular sign. We are approaching the traffic circle, existing traffic circle at Farmington Ridge Parkway. They are proposing to place these signs actually within the right-of-way of the traffic circle. This has been vetted by the town's engineering department, and we are proposing a condition of approval. Yet, this goes forward, that they would have to get an encroachment agreement. But these signs, I look as more as a branding, a placemaking sign. They are actually branding the village center for Farmington. They, too, are nicely designed and are 40 square feet in size, four feet in height, again, within the public right-of-way and halo lit. At the other two corners within the traffic circle, they are proposing to combine signs at this particular location. These signs are proposed to be 60 square feet in size by feet in height, again, located within the right-of-way and halo lit as well. With regard to individual occupant out parcel signs, again, remembering the map, the from Rocky River Road to the first intersection, you see the green dots. Those are considered out parcels, and this would be the criteria by which they would have to comply. It's completely within the, in compliance with the existing code. So, there's no request for flexibility with these particular signs. Now, they are proposing a different sign type, and we call them wayfinding or directory signs. They are proposing five of these signs within the area that they are proposing to eliminate individual ground mounted signs. These would be directory signs that are non-eliminated. They have arrows, so there'd be a tenant name or business name on it with a arrow directing someone to take a left or a right at the next intersection or go forward to find a particular business. Again, these would require an encroachment agreement, and we would have to ensure that there might be some adjustments on locations just to ensure that there's no conflicts with utilities or within a site triangle.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, they want the one on the left versus the example McDonald's in the blue and red sign?
I'm sorry.
They want the example on the left versus the McDonald's in the blue and red sign?
Yes, so, so the ones on the left are the wayfinding signs, which is a unique type. So, that's the flexibility. The small signs, the directory signs on the rights are ones that you typically see at driveways. Those don't even require permits. They are allowed by right. It's, it's the larger ones that's the focus of the sign program. With regard to building signs, wall signs, projecting sign, canopy signs, and such, these all fall within the requirements of the existing ordinance. So, they're not asking for any flexibility on these. Showing some examples of different lighting frequencies. You have halo list of the second light on the left. You see it kind of has a glow. That's a halo lit. The bottom left is a halo lit. The one on the top would be considered individual channel ledgers, internally illuminated. So, I'm going to focus for a few minutes on the flexibility request. So, the applicant in this Master Sign Program is requesting flexibility in location. Some of the signs are proposed within the right-of-way. My ordinance typically require all signs to be on private property, some by easement. They are asking for flexibility with regard to sign, size, and a couple of the signs, then type, meaning the branding signs and traffic circles and the directory signs and wayfinding signs are a unique type. In exchange for this flexibility, they are self-imposing within this program limitations. They will eliminate individual ground-mounted signs along Farmington Ridge Parkway north of that first intersection, all the way through the commercial district. They're within our jurisdiction. They are also prohibiting the electronic message boards within the development, again, except for one parcel, which is the Harris Teeter Fuel Station. They are proposing enhancements with regard to the quality of design of the signs and materials and illumination that will be used throughout the development. And again, the goal is a cohesive sign package that will be utilized within the development. So, when we were discussing this sign program and the request for flexibility, I asked them to prepare this exhibit, and I need to pull mine out. Can't read the screen really quick here. So, within this, I asked them to calculate the number of signs in the square footage of the signs they will be giving up if done by right, and that would be north of that intersection. So, if you look to the right, the top box is allowable under the UDO. They have potential for 13 signs. Here we go. I have to read my paper up close. 13 signs with a total of 608 square feet. And that would be a mix of some for the individual parcels and some, you have one ability with multiple tenants, the combined development signs. Then, I asked them to, on the bottom table, to provide, well, per your request, you know, how many signs are you requesting that would be sort of flexible and the total square footage? So, I wanted to see if it was an even exchange. And what it results in is they're 11, they're asking for 11 signs. That includes the five wayfinding signs, the directory sign. A total of 488 square feet, just over that, which is less than what they would be allowed by right if they were just to go by the standard UDO. So, in comparing this, we, if any additional zoning, we have to go through the required binding criteria for approval. And the town of Harrisburg has a lot. We have the general criteria that all applications have to meet, as well as some specific to a conditional zoning. So, I'll try to go over some of the information briefly. Some of the criteria, it is all found in the staff report. I go through each finding that is, that is needed or that review criteria individually. So, I'm going to focus on the ones tied to the conditional zoning. So, the first focus is on new location. So the first focus is on nuisance location, that the proposed conditional district uses or appropriateness for its location and consistency with the purpose goals and objectives of the policy of our HALA. This amendment is to add a master sign program to existing planning development, does not affect existing approved uses at this location, and further enhances the goals of promoting high-quality development as found in land use six goal of the HALA. With regard to eligible uses, the uses requested are among those listed as eligible committed uses. Again, there's no proposal to amend permissible uses within this conditional zoning district. Nuisance mitigation, the design of the proposed CD district uses, minimization of adverse effects, including visual impacts of proposed use, adjacent lands, avoidance of significant adverse impacts on surrounding lands regarding trash traffic, service delivery, parking, loading, odor, noise, glare, and vibration will not create a nuisance. Again, this amendment does not propose a change to the design of the proposed planning use development. This amendment does propose standardizing signs within the development, creating a high-quality sign program with a focus on reducing sign clutter. Reasonableness, excuse me, reasonableness. The use limitations and conditions as proposed and/or imposed for the requested district can recently be implemented or for the subject property. The proposed sign program can be implemented and enforced to the town's sign permitting process and encroachment permit process. Improvement from general zoning district when implementation, when implemented, the proposed and/or imposed use limitations and conditions will mitigate specific land development issues. The conditional zoning district is subject to all other conditions of approval established by the town in addition to conditions placed on this subject amendment related to the proposed master sign program. Greater standards, now this one I think really applies to, to this request. It says, if any standards are proposed that are different from the underlying zoning district, the applicant must clearly demonstrate that the overall resulted project is greater than that which is typically allowed by the general district. The applicant has demonstrated that although the master sign program requests some flexibility, the overall allocated sign area and number of ground mounted signs is slightly less than permitted by right in the zone. Further demonstrated are the higher quality performance standards such as design material and elimination that would, would otherwise be permitted by right. Applicant agreement, the applicant has agreed to accept the use limitations and conditions of approval. The applicant has reviewed the conditions and will comply with all. And then there's requirement for a town statement regarding consistency with the town's land use plan. Provided a statement here that the proposed zoning amendments to add a master sign program to an approved planning development, notice Farmington. This amendment is consistent with the following goals of the land use plan. Land use goal six, this amendment focuses on a higher level of development, approving the overall appearance and quality, design signs within a high-profile development, utilizing flexibility in the program to enhance placemaking. And E D three goal, which is economic development, this amendment supports high-quality retail development in a new shoes walkable location by establishing a sign program that meets the needs of businesses while reducing the potential for sign clutter. That's a lot. So the proposed conditions of approval are the four that are in your packet and on the screen. The applicant will comply with all conditions of the approval established in the previously approved conditional zoning for the Farmington planning development. Signs proposed within the right-of-way shall require approval of an encroachment permit. From the town, sign locations are subject to adjustment based on field locations and utilities and site requirements. Signing Jet Rock the River Road intersection shall comply with M C P O T site triangles and permitting and compliance is required with all local, state, and federal agencies. So the planning board action tonight is to receive the report and the public comment. Our recommended motion is to approve and recommend approval to the town council, make the required finding for reasonableness and consistency with the HALA as stated here and read into the record. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Shelley. Anybody have any questions? All right, so. Back down, let's just roll through it, starting at page nine. Can we do that?
Through the sign program?
Through the agenda package that you sent us?
Yes.
Let's go back to page. My first question is, so is the language that's actually going, you give us the four conditions, but the actual language of this sign package, is it going to be the document, the text on page nine, ten that you have in our packet? Is it also going to have attachment C and D that was provided to us also? What is actually going to?
So what happens when, when a conditional zoning goes through, it will be an ordinance with all conditions of approval outlined on it, plus the, the final attached document of the sign program as approved by the town council?
Well, that's what I'm trying to ask. We don't have that in front of us.
Yeah.
The actual language that's going in there.
You don't have the ordinance?
Yes.
No, that's for council. We're looking for recommendation based on the staff report and all the information and the conditions of approval. So we take your comments, we incorporate it in an actual ordinance that goes to the town council in the complete package.
All right. I'll get to that one. All right, so now we're going to roll down to page ten, which kind of explained to me. So they're proposing five additional ways finding signs that are different than the by right normal ones. So they also can install the by right normal ones, or they're only going to do five?
So with regard to, you're talking about the wayfinding directory signs?
Wayfinding signs.
Okay, so our ordinance is silent in that. So the only small, really directory signs we have are typically the ones at driveways that say enter, exit, or wall signs that may have for multiple tenants. So this is a new type that they're asking for flexibility on. As proposed here, they're proposing five. That's what we compared with, that would be limited to, again, the locations may fluctuate a little bit. They may be better strategically to be a little further south or north near intersections.
But instead of those, some of the ground-mounted individual signs?
And also they can install the, we have the ordinance limiting that, right? So the traditional way signing finds it to the right there, we see that in continued.
Yes, the little driveway signs.
In addition to, not in.
So these are directory signs, and those are like entrance signs, enters, you know, they, they shouldn't have, they might have a business logo.
The same thing with the, the little small signs up against the.
Right, so those hanging signs are, yes, they're allowed without permit. So some of them are allowed, these small ones, these driveway, I'll call it driveway signs, like directory, enter, exit, those are allowed without a permit. They were just sort of showing some examples of them, but what we're really focused on are the wayfinding signs here.
Why do those exist in the public right-of-way and not on private property? Is that visibility reasons?
Yeah, it, it was, and again, they, they can put them in either place if you don't think it's appropriate within the right-of-way, but the intent is to help as strategic locations as you approach corners, intersections, to be able to direct a driver to, to make that turn or to go forward and so forth. And they are typical for larger developments. Sometimes you'll see them on a pole with like arrows in the names of the businesses. So they come in various styles, like the town has its own wayfinding signs to the Park Town Hall, you know, which are on poles.
Those are concerned though, if we allow those, they could still have your driveway signs, which are not, is that per the landlord or per the tenant who would put those up?
All signs, whether they're the small ones or not, have to be reviewed by the town and the.
They wouldn't though, right? They.
Have to be reviewed, so you can't just go out and install a sign.
Right, because someone can.
If there's no.
Any sign.
We still have criteria. So there are certain categories of signs, such as these driveway, and I'll call them incidental driveway signs, that we still have criteria as to the size, because someone say, may say, I need an enter sign, six feet tall, and this, so we still have criteria, but they don't need a permit for it. So as long as they meet that criteria, they don't need a permit. If they try to propose something outside of that, then they need a permit. If that makes sense. But the wayfinding directory signs, that's a new type that you don't really have in our ordinance. It's a wayfinding type sign.
Or maintain that right-of-way or is the town?
The town maintains a right-of-way, so they would have to get an encroachment agreement and have to be insured and so forth.
I would, I would beef up the pedestal on that sign. Bowers and tremors aren't going to deal well with metal on the grass that the town's picked up.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's true. That's true. So they would be in there.
Okay, so I got another question.
Yes.
On the application, they told you anything? So there are two other parcels of this site that are not controlled by M P V or the bill. There is Guy Properties LLC and H P Jelly LLC. Do they still fall under this? It's on the exception plan. I got a copy of it, signed by Mel.
I'm going to let the applicant answer that. Oh, so you mean within the development privately?
And this proposed sign criteria, there are two other property owners, and I don't know if they fall under some kind of covenants.
Yeah, that's a great question.
I, yeah, I know what he's saying now.
Yeah, I just wanted to get it clarified.
It will.
I'm George Macon, twenty-four-hundred Red Fox Trail Charlotte, Carolina. I'm with M P V, I'm the developer of the project. So we, I think you're referring to, we sold the Chick-fil-A to Guy Properties and we sold, I guess we sold the, well, we just sold the, the multi-tenant building to an investor. But they would fall, well, first of all, they would have to comply with the signage ordinance of the town of Harrisburg. And then furthermore, what we've agreed to do is make the, well, the sign program.
It's not stapled, sorry.
Okay, well, this would become this signage criteria, we have a master declaration or a, or a, lack of C C R, we have a master declaration for Farmington. This will become like the architectural guidelines with our, you know, this would become part of that declaration, enforcement of the declaration, which is recorded, and a recorded controlling document that runs with the land.
Thank you.
And further of that, so say the tenants change and that multi-tenant building, all the properties owned by someone else, Carly, who issues the permit, so they'd have to commit for a sign permit, she will have the approved, if approved, will have a sign program, and they have to comply with it. So yes, it does apply as long as it's within the Farmington development.
There're going to be a retroactive application, the sign is that exists on site today, and these signs that stay out there, just going to stay.
They stay out there, they stay out there, they all should comply the way they're.
But they're not going to look the same. They're not going to have the Farmington branding on it, that's.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think there's anything we can do retroactively, but there's really nothing out there other, the only sign out there right now is the Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A, the other one, yeah.
And, yeah.
Is that sign the, the one, like this one? The entry one? Is that like blocking Chick-fil-A in any way? Like is it?
No. It's not, it's not blocking it at all, and we, I mean, when we did the development, we created a sign easement for this type of entry sign to be at that location.
So they knew.
Right. And the idea is, I mean, this is at the entrance of a, I mean, Farmington's a pretty large development. My design intent here was, even though they're six foot tops, to create a more low-profile sign, which to, at least to me, is a better aesthetic coming into the community than your, your typical. And just because I was thinking about it, can you connect to the right-of-way, since we're talking about these signs, I just want to make a comment about that.
But try.
The roundabout right-of-way. Yeah, I think it's really important, and I really appreciate staff's flexibility in working with us on this, because we want to create the best aesthetic out here we can. We felt like that roundabout is a focal point where we can really create a sense of place for Farmington. And you can't really create the symmetry and the, and the visual that you want if we can't encroach just because of the irregularity of the right-of-ways there. They're, they're really funky. And so we work with staff to, to create, to get an encroachment in there so that we could create the symmetry and the look and the aesthetic we want. And, I mean, we've worked with engineering, there's no real, there's no safety issue here, there's no site triangle issue or anything like that. So I really, getting that encroachment's really important, creating that look.
And now you put a barrier between the circle and pedestrians for a safety, if anything, if I'm.
I was actually, my question was, I was just curious about, especially because it's at a roundabout that's supposed to keep traffic moving. So my concern is always for safety reasons, if I'm driving up and I'm trying to see, you know, traffic, that it's not going to be blocking anything because the signs are a little bit taller, because, and you want to be seeing it from further back and not, it's not a stop, you know, it's traffic that continuously moves, so you need to be able to see from further back. So I just want to make sure of that. Nothing worse than you're driving, trying to see a giant bush or sidewalk, yes.
Well, I think, again, we, we work with engineering to make sure there was no site triangle compromise. And then also, I think if you look at the, again, the lower profile nature of these, and just the geometry and the function of the way the, the roundabout works, we kind of thought through a lot of that to make sure there was no safety issues that were being compromised there.
The bigger issue I would have is crosswalks after the sign, especially if, if kids like to turn ahead, if there's a two-foot wall, you're not going to see a two-foot toddler running out behind that wall. So that's all I, I think, the circle I, I get, but I would say as you get closer to where those pedestrian ways, especially with this becoming a more pedestrian focus zone, I would pay attention to the circle.
So I don't know, it might just be me, but like I'm looking at this example with the roundabout, right? So where would the wayfinder sign actually be located?
Well, there's.
There, for example, in this, like, right, because I said they're on the roundabouts, right?
No, not the wayfinding signs. The wayfinding signs.
There's no wayfinding signs at the roundabout.
Correctly, wayfinding, have them? One, oh, so they're not at, okay.
It's the blue circle with the red dot in it.
Don't use the back exhibit because there's like twice the amount of signs.
Yeah, that, that one is something different used in the community of the program.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Case four had them on your.
Okay. All right.
How do you all determine who gets room on the sign if you have more than ten companies? And you're not going to come back and ask for more?
Hence why I've been working so hard with Shelley to come up with this at the entrance to Farmington. And it's, if you look at, can we, can I go to this site?
Oh, yeah, you want to go to this site? Will I go back or?
No, this is fine.
Okay.
Maybe this is just to give a quick development overview. I mean, it's a big project, commercial forty-three acres. That's, you know, I, I think there's two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of potential commercial development on the Harrisburg side and then additional on the Mecklenburg side. So if you can think about that, we have those interest signs at Farmington. We gotta, we have to create a sense of arrival at something. You know, we, we try to come up with all these fancy formulas for that question, but it would advance what comes down to is first come, first served. And so really. And so really what I think we're trying to accomplish with this, uh, subdivision, uh, entry sign that says Farmington. And then the other one on the other side, or really with the internal out parcel of users and then a major tenant on the inside. We might also wanna just advertise the Farmington Village Center. We haven't worked all this out, but. You know, we have limited space. We wanna use it the best we can. I feel like setting it up the way we've done at the front with Farmington and that. Multi-tenant sign, and then again accomplishing at the roundabout to, to really brand and develop, I think will be fun.
Do you have more questions, Bill?
Page forty-five. And, and it's, this is just, I'm okay with all of the wider lower signs and the location. Um, the individual signs, but I believe this is by right, so I'm just out of luck, but. Everything else is standing up for these are relatively tall compared to the rest of the sign package. Look at the individual tenant signs, they're six foot tall, well. Maybe that's forty-seven in our total package.
Hey, I'm sorry, yeah, forty-five, I'm sorry, forty-five, yes.
Yes, so they're seven feet tall.
It's a big sign. Um, but if that's by right, I believe you said it was by right.
Yeah.
In your text on page nine.
By right, let me double check that.
What you have on page nine, yeah.
Can I make a comment about that?
Yes, they have up to eight feet.
Yes, it's a tall square footage.
I think, you know, our view on that is again, and working with staff is. And some of the concessions we made with those individual groundhanging signs as you get into the development was. Was looking at the development as sort of, you have the layer out front, which is coming on the interstate and where the out parcel, and then you get internal. And you get into the more pedestrian friendly village that we're really trying to create. And I think these individual signs that are by right, that, that this are more appropriate for. That out parcel sign out front, and then as you transition in and we get, you know. Our goal is the same as y'all. We don't want a bunch of, you know, sign clutter and all that. That's why we set it up that way.
And they'll, they'll be out of the right of way and out of sight.
They're on private property, yes.
They're on the lots.
They are on private property.
Yeah, that's just a personal preference.
Yeah, they are allowed by right to be thirty-two square feet, eight feet and high.
Um, then my last thing, well, two last things. And this, I just, and again, this kind of goes back to my first question. Uh, you know, the package that we've got, showing all the signs and all, you know, if this is all gonna be incorporated into the language of PUD. You know, there's a lot of language in Exhibit A now, so on page, on page fifty. That addresses that relationship between the landlord and if the. Package you give us, page fifty, that's page fourteen of the sign package.
Page fourteen of the.
Page fourteen of the sign package. That's, attachment C. It's the Exhibit A tenant building signature signage criteria. But anyway, while you're looking for it, it just, it addresses a lot of that. Interface between the landlord and the tenant. Now, it does mention the fact that, yes, it has to meet town code as far as the sign ordinance. But it also addresses some of that final say that the landlord has between the landlord and tenant.
Yeah.
And I'm just a little leery about incorporating that into the PUD, because it's. You know, ultimately, if there's a code enforcement violation, there's a sign violation, the violation is gonna go to the owner. Landlord, not the tenant. The tenant has to go get the sign back, and I understand that in that relationship between them. But when you take that language in Exhibit A, now you put it in your official document, which gives final authority to the landlord. That, you know, the tenant has to bring a sign permit, you know, but the landlord has final discretion. Now, maybe I'm way off track on this.
Well.
It just seems like if this is gonna be the language the PUD resides with. It should be consistent with the ordinance, not have language that addresses the relationship between a landlord and his tenant.
Yeah, as far as the town is concerned, the tenants are relevant. Because legally binding to the owner.
Maybe, maybe I'll.
I, I, I hear. So I, I understand what you're saying, that, that is.
That's why I was hoping to see the final product.
Well, the sign program you have is the final product. That is the final pro- product that will be, if approved this way, that will be attached as Exhibit A. On an ordinance that outlines the conditions of approval. We will incorporate the conditions of approval in the final sign package as well, so that is the final sign package. When it comes to signage, the final say for a sign, a sign is actually the town. We issued the permit. So we issue the permit, the tenant has to.
Yeah, that's, that's where my, so for example, you go to number six in this document. We're gonna include this document. Number six states. Major tenant signs will be regulated by landlord and the size and location will be at the discretion and approval of landlord. And governmental regulations.
Yeah.
Not too bad.
All of them, they still have to abide by the government regulations.
You still have to abide by the government.
I understand it.
In all cases, so, you know, I, I think because they're gonna attach this to their leasing documents and be, uh. Yeah, I think they're just mixing the language, but at the end of the day.
I just feel.
But the landlord cannot prove anything outside of.
Yeah, the landlord can only. That document's in there to let the tenant know that. They just can't come to the town for a permit.
Well, I understand, but that is the relationship between the landlord and his tenant.
Well, it's also for us too, so somebody comes in, i- i- if the new tenant comes in to pull a permit from us. We're going to wanna look to see it's been vetted.
Understood.
Because we have a sign program with them, so hopefully it keeps us all on the same page.
I understand. I just, I just want to express my opinion. That's how I feel. I think and this. The two should be simple, but in the end, that's, that's all I have to explain.
I mean, I.
You wanna pull it out? I mean.
But. I mean, I, MPV, I.
That property, people have disvended with.
And I can just speak to what we do, and what we do is, again, we have this as a. Requirement in the declaration, so they have to adhere to it that way, and then any specific. Uh, leasing document, our leases re that you have to adhere to. Will permit you the signage that's consistent with this, that we always have the carve-out. Because the last thing I wanna do is approve a sign of somebody that is not consistent with the ordinance. Then I got a big problem. So every lease we say says, your, your sign, no matter what we say, is subject to. Local governmental regulation. So that, I mean, I'm not speaking to what. I'm just telling you what we do.
Yeah, I understand, and I understand that, and that's why, why not the language not clearly.
Yeah.
It ends at town approval. That's where, that's when you can install a sign. You guys do your preliminary, yeah, this is okay, take this to the town, we're okay with this, take it to the town. But if you read the steps and the way this thing goes, you're asking them to come to you with a sign permit. And then you give it the thumbs up and thumb down.
I think it's too low of approval.
Yeah.
Uh, well, but I, but I think it's designed to be that way. You know, I think they, as a tenant. You know, I may want something great and grandiose, and I think to him, he goes, are you crazy? No, no, because it's not intense.
And it may be something that abides by the town regulations.
Exactly.
Landlord doesn't want that, so you don't want the town leasing resources producing something that the landlord would have to be sustained.
But I don't, I don't, I don't want to argue about this one. I think it's.
So we're, we're gonna follow up with, uh, legal on this, uh. But I mean, number one, states clearly, all signs are subject to government landlord approval.
And not war, I mean, we can't do anything without your approval.
Right.
And I'm just at that layer.
I got one last one, I hate to say.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, we got development as on the last page.
We have one, sorry.
It's not a big sticking point, I'm okay with it, but. Okay, so in the top, max loud per U D O. We're talking about potential iOS signs, right? Six of them. Right? Then we're adding the CDS and the subdivision entry signs, right? So when you go to the bottom one, we've got the CDS and subdivision entries, right? Those two are the same in the top and bottom. But now iOS signs are out and wayfinding signs are included.
Right, they're, they're giving up.
But there's, there is iOS signs below, south of. There's six signs, there's the same number of square footage that's gonna be included in it. Hundred ninety-two square foot, right? Look at the drawing.
So, so you, you are correct in that we asked them to prepare this to, uh. To evaluate the signs they're giving up compared to what they're asking for to, to see if it's an equal request. Leaving alone the. Individual signs that are allowed by right down to the south. So if you want us to add this one, two, three, four, five, six signs into this table, it's a wash. It'll end up being a wash. Because they're allowed by right and they're proposing it, so that's a wash.
Well, can you say the same thing about wayfinding signs?
So wayfinding, no, it's clear here that, that's why we had them write it this way, that they are giving up their. Ground mounted sign allowance for the combined sign allowance along that road in exchange for. What's in the bottom table, which includes the five wayfinding signs, so.
It ended up the same. Not be the same. It would be six hundred and seventy-six. Total, but anyway, it's not sticking point for me. Just, you're gonna have comparable tables, they need to show what you're, you know. You have six iOS signs, a hundred ninety-two square feet, is, in this proposed sign package, that is gonna be there. That should be included in that bottom, you know, including mom's CDS, that is.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure of following, so I just wanna make sure I'm answering your question. So the top table is to show north of the line. So this top table shows.
That's what they could have done per the ordinance, right?
That's only from here up. Here up, not down here. We have them show exactly how many signs, because they're self eliminating those, they're eliminating those.
I thought that was on the top half, but what are these? These were below also, correct? And above?
No, all of these are strictly above, so if you notice a change, different in colors, some are, some of these. Would be allowed a combined sign, because they're multi-tenant. So that's what the CDS stands for, so north of this line, they could potentially have six of these purple dots, which are. Uh, combined development signs and six of the orange signs are like individual tenant, uh, type buildings. So total plus one subdivision entry over here, so that total is six oh eight. So that's their potential they're giving up, so in exchange for that, they're, in this area, they're.
Now, we're still north of.
Yes, uh, the only one that they added in was this, these signs down here, because they're asking for a little extra square footage, so I told them to include it. I want the, every flexibility request, that's the wayfinding sign, these combined signs, the branding at the traffic circle. That's what this table down below represents, which is four eighty-eight, which is less than what they would be allowed by right. So what I was trying to do is, is to show that they were not requesting above and beyond what they would. Otherwise be permitted by right, they're just in a different, they're flex, it's a flexibility request. Uh, sort of a exchange of development rights based on locations with regard to signs. So I wanted to show that they're not asking to, to go out, exceed the allowed signage, they're just proposing it in a different form. It's a lot of information.
Uh, so what about the signs at the roundabout that are north of the south?
They're in there, they're, they call.
Only thing that's drug up from the south is the main entrance.
Yes, that's not in there.
Five iOS, six iOS signs. Okay. That's the high split of identical.
So, yeah, we, we were just trying to clarify, which I guess it could have been a little more clear. What the flexibility and what they would be allowed otherwise by right.
You've, you changed your note that's on that sheet. Cause I get it now that you're talking about it, but I did the same thing. I started adding up the signs. I got like twenty-nine signs.
Okay.
But the orange and purple dots are what they could have had by right. They're giving up.
They're giving those up, that's right. They're giving those up in exchange for these larger signs at strategic locations. Now, believe it or not, our applicant does have a small presentation on Farmington. If you would like to transition or do you have any more questions?
No, I'm, I'm done, thank you.
We're gonna send the two town council. To approve the sign program, yes. This whole packet?
Yes. This, this whole.
This whole packet.
This whole packet is proposed to be attached and amended as guided by the board.
But that's all, we're sending two town councils to approve.
With the conditions, right, the conditions, what they'll get is they'll, they'll get an ordinance with your recommendation in it. And the conditions of approval, and this will be Exhibit A. With any modifications you propose tonight.
This is semantics, but from a sign square footage standpoint, that only applies to the actual letters on. The instruction that's constructed. For example, there are calculated ninety-six square feet. It was dimensioned only where it says the word Farmington, not the entire sign structure, is that.
It doesn't include the base, yes, sign area does not include the base, it's a sign area, yes.
They could put a two thousand square foot panel up and only have ninety-six, ninety-six square feet in that.
Well, no, we do the whole top frame of it, so we.
That's not what the dimension, that's all I'm, I, just getting clarification.
I think the colors are throwing, because they're both labeled in red. Am I correct?
So the ninety-six is the, the dimension that Shelley mentioned, the upper part. Which is the upper part, it's not the base.
Twenty-four or whatever.
Correct.
Yes, the color.
So the sign, yeah, the sign portion, sorry about that, dark brown portion and not the base. It's with the actual wording on copy on it, the wording on it, right?
Thank you for putting.
I, you know, I, I touched on a lot of this one, just through our comments and our discussion, I don't know. Um, if y'all have any questions, I was, I was gonna give a brief update on Farmington. Um, you know, where we are, really the intent of the sign program, that's really what we were talking about, trying to. Create the appropriate scale and, and architectural vibe, if you will, for the overall development. Um. As you transition from Rocky River Road into Farmington Ridge Parkway to the rest of the project. And again, trying to establish the right scale out of Rocky River and then transitioning into the more pedestrian friendly, um, part of the project. Um, you know, that we are all looking to create. Um, again, I think, you know, Shelley touched on it a lot about, you know, what the intent of it is. I've worked on a lot of these projects over my career and really a master sign program, you know. We, we seek to establish guidelines for sign materials, framework, elimination and background that will. You know, really accomplish the following points, which are to, you know, enhance a cohesive sense of place. Complement the overall architectural design, we're trying to, again, the architectural theme of Farmington. It is modern farmhouse, I think the design faces and, and. Uh, and design is supposed to complement that. Um, it's supposed to accentuate the quality feel of the overall development, which I think what we put together certainly does, and then. Really what we've talked about is reduce signage clutter and confusion and really, you know, create a, a quality environment. And I think, you know, it's important to maybe look at a couple of examples in our community. Um, in our region that I think accomplished this, one of which, um, that Shelley and I, you know, were. Referenced when we were working on this together was Kingsley, um, which is a project down in, um, in Fort Mill. Um, I don't know if y'all are familiar with it, but this shows different types of signage in the project that are all consistent. And really create that sense of place that we're talking about. You see the main entry sign there on the top left. Um, with the branding of the, of the, um, the branding of King. Um, with the branding of the, of the, um, the branding of Kingsley in the middle there, and then you see the small wayfinding signs up at the top. Um, this project's very well done. This is what we would seek to accomplish at Farmington as we build the project out. Another project that I was, um, myself involved in is, um, Blakeney and South Charlotte. We had a, a very, I mean, we had a master sign program for Blakeney that if you've been there and look at it, all of the signage shares a theme. Of, um, the Blakeney branding, the Blakeney name, the, the, these, uh, brick column. Um, that you see here, those are all individual signs throughout. They also have the wayfinding signs here that you see on, and on a pedestal. And, um, this is again, an example of what we would seek to accomplish at Farmington and, um. I think that's really, really it. I don't know if y'all have more questions that just posed to me about the project.
Still chasing an anchor tenant?
We are. We actually have some things we're working on that are, that are exciting. I can't record on anything, but, um. It would be really game changing if we can, we can bring them to fruition. I don't want to.
Yeah.
But again, we're working hard on it. I think what we've done out there, um, from my point of view, speaks of the quality that we're trying to do. I will say that we worked with you guys a lot on the Chick-fil-A, and I think it might be one of the better Chick-fil-A's I've ever seen aesthetically. And we'll seek to do that with the other things that we're working on. I think, I mean, y'all have been working on the, the toast, which I think is a very nice looking building. I'm working on a building on the Mecklenburg side that will, that we hope to start construction on the next couple of months it's permitted. Um, I'm waiting on a final lease in it. It would be next to the Dunkin' Donuts building out front. It will look very, very similar to that. Um, and then we're, of course, have the, um. I don't know if I can get to the.
Yeah, go.
You see the Farmington Ridge shops there. We're working on permitting that, getting enough critical mass of tenants that we can start that, so. We had a hard time getting enough traction on the Farmington Village Center right now, so we, we reversed our strategy to try to build from the outside in. I would say that the quality of tenants is very strong with, you know, Chick-fil-A, Harris Keeter Fuel, um, Dunkin'. Uh, we're working obviously with some, some folks, um, on the other out parcels on the right. So, I mean, those are very quality tenants that you would find in this quality. Uh, class A retail environment, so. We're good about the direction. If we can get, you know, the anchor we're, we're working, it'd be good.
I have a question too. What, I guess, makes the anchor and some of these other places hesitant to come to Farmington? Like Blakeney has some great shops, like, I mean, we could get some of those up here, but what, what is making them, I guess, not want to come? Or is there something we as a town are missing, something that we can look, you know?
Well, part of it is not, has, has nothing to do with, look, an anchor like a movie theater, that's just a market.
Right, yeah.
That's nothing specific to. Part of it is the, this land is deep restricted in grocery. Because of the Harris Keeter across the street, it was the same up. So that limits your, your, a, a big type anchor. So, you know, there are others out there that we're seeking and it's just a matter of. Of demographics and density and enough people to drive the business.
In some of the smaller ones though, too, like is that.
What's on?
Are you finding a hard time to like get for something smaller ones?
Um, well. I mean, what I will say is look at the quality of tenants we have in there, all doing well. So I'm optimistic about, I'm optimistic about our trajectory and where we're going to get to. Um, the market is a little, I mean, the market's a little tough from a financing standpoint, but. We live in a, in a, in a geography in the Sundell in North Carolina. People are moving here, as y'all. As this gentleman pointed out, traffic, it's an issue that we all face, but people want to be in North Carolina. The retail, unlike office, is not overbuilt, it's not occurring any supply-demand dynamic problems. So there's demand, there's need for space just because of where we are. And I think over time, we're going to be successful here. So.
Does the sign package go across into Mecklenburg County too? We love package for both paths.
This package goes across there. I mean, we're going to adhere to Mecklenburg signage.
And I have to tweak it somewhat.
But the, the look, this will be, the declaration governs the whole, the whole thing.
So, please, you don't have any, you have questions for me? Any additional questions? Again, this is a request for conditional zoning, uh, to amend the. Uh, plan new development for Farmington by adding an additional layer of design criteria related to this master sign program. And the master sign program is requesting some flexibility that, uh, reviewed as a whole package. Um, we, we believe staff believes it is in keeping with the intent of the ordinance, the sign regulations for them. Uh, so, that, you don't have any other questions, so.
Thanks. Oh, and that the discussion, if the board members have any comments or injunction.
I don't have any questions or anything.
I know. I, I would like to make the motion to approve with modification, the modification being review from legal to make sure. We don't have any discrepancies, and if we don't, then as, as presented.
Put a motion on the floor, second.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Uh, I, I, any votes? Passives. Chris, do you need a consistency statement at all?
Make a motion that we, uh, accept a consistency statement as written.
That's.
Okay, the conditional zoning condition especially being consistent with sections one forty-five oh one oh seven and one forty-five oh three oh three of the U D O. And it's reasonable, requires inconsistent with the L U six and E, E B three calls of the health.
So I have a motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, 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 I believe that the terms are new business. Shelley, do we have any additional updates or information outside?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question?
Being.
I'm still the.